I like flamingos, so. Flamingos is awesome to me.
Go which one?
Flamingo.
Good to go. All set?
Yep.
All right. Welcome to the July 2nd City Council, City of Angels Meeting. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Collendorf is absent. Vice Mayor Olivera?
Present.
Councilmember Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Matilde?
Here.
Councilmember Bruglio?
Here.
Okay. Item two, approval of the agenda, adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to make an adjustment to the, an addition to the agenda. Late today, I received a new resolution from the city attorney, and I had amended a resolution regarding the items that we wanted to put on the ballot. One, for the increase of the transient occupancy tax, and the other, to make the city clerk, city treasurer positions appointed rather than elected. We got word from the county elections office that there were some changes that needed to be made in our resolution, and we have done that. And they're up on the table here if you wanted to look at them, and you guys have them as well. The changes were minor, but the county felt that it was worth redoing the resolutions. So, I would like to add to the regular agenda, or it could be the consent agenda, whichever you prefer. The approval of Resolution 1924, submitting a ballot measure for the increase in transient occupancy tax, and superseding Resolution 1912. And the approval of Resolution 1926, to put an item on the ballot to make the city clerk and city treasurer positions appointed rather than elected, and that supersedes Resolution 1914.
Okay. I'd recommend we add it to the regular agenda, and it might better fit for public comment if anybody wants to say anything there.
We can call that E on the regular agenda.
Sure. Yep.
And we'll call it E and F. We'll do them separately.
Separately. And you need, you need a motion and a vote on each?
I need a motion and a vote to amend the agenda.
I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding E and F.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Four oh. Okay. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff or placed on the next meeting's agenda. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for public comment. The mayor may reduce the amount of time based on the number of persons wishing to speak. If others have already expressed your position, you may indicate that you agree with a previous speaker. If appropriate, a spokesperson may represent the views of your entire group. Speakers may not disrupt the meeting or use profanity. Any public comment? Amy?
Mr. Mayor, in working on the city's housing element, we touched base with the Amador Cholomee Community Action Agency, who informed us that they are desperately seeking people who might want a free new washing machine, dishwasher, low-flow toilet, under their program for water conservation. They have money from the Department of Water Resources. They're having trouble finding people who want to take them up on their offer to conserve water by getting these free appliances based upon income. And the income levels are relatively decent, from one person, $2,100 a month, to six people, $5,500 a month. I'm going to put some applications up front. If you want any further information, feel free to contact us. But they also have weatherization programs, but they're desperate to hand out some of this free money that they have.
Okay. Is that something we could post on the city's website?
That's something we could.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing no further public comment, we will move to report out on closed session. We met in closed session today at five to discuss one, one matter of anticipated litigation, and a direction was given to staff. Consent agenda. We have items A through B. Does anybody on the council wish to pull anything for further discussion?
I was going to pull E.
And I'd like to pull C and D.
There we go.
Any other comments?
No, I'm good.
How about we vote on A and B?
Deal.
You need a motion?
I make a motion for A and B.
Consent?
For consent.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. A and B pass, four oh. Alvin, I'll give it to you on E.
Okay. On E, I just wanted to say, good job to the community club before it passes through. Jessica's here, Cor and Johnny are here. You guys have been working your tails off, and hopefully, the grant goes through and you guys get a chunk of change to help make the park awesome down there. And then I saw on Facebook, too, did you guys get refrigeration, or what was that? So that's, I was going to ask these guys. You gotta come up.
Oh, hi. Cora Bruglio, president of the Angels Camp Community Club. Yes, we did get refrigeration. Angels Food Market partnered with us. So we have 450 pizzas coming from Pizza Plus. August 8th, we're going to do a walk-up dinner to raise money for the park. We are obviously optimistic that we will get this grant. All of Amy's and Diane's hard work is no doubt paying off. The outreach to the community is going very well, but that does not lessen our commitment to raising the money on our own. That is something that we're continuing to do. We do not count our chickens before they're hatched, so we are continuing to raise money. And if the grant comes through, then that just means that the Angels Camp Community Club will be looking to better or improve different parks and recreational spots within our town. And we're open to suggestions for that, but we do have a chunk of change that the community has helped us raise. So, we're here to keep on, keep it on, regardless of whether or not we get the grant. So yes, refrigeration is taken care of, farmer's market's going well, everything's awesome.
Yes, that's six hundred. Go ahead.
I apologize, I was, you said you were going to be doing a drive-through?
We are, as it turns out. Papa Murphy's in Sonora has been looking to partner with community clubs like ours, or schools, or some, you know, some type of nonprofit organization to help raise money. So we're hoping to do a drive-through, well, walk-up, on August 8th, where we offer a take-and-bake pizza, which is not cooked in a barrel, which is going to shock people, because that tends to be the preferred method of fundraising in our community. So we are going to do a take-and-bake pizza, two liters of soda, you know, something like that. So something a little bit different.
The girls are around, like pizza.
I know, but just like pizzas. Don't bring it up, Veronica. We are not, I don't want to go on record as saying we're cooking them in a barrel. So that's kind of what we're looking at. So always looking forward, always looking at a way to raise money, because there's an infinite number of possibilities for this community to better itself for children and families, and that's our angle. So, yes, we're taken care of. Thank you.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comment there?
I just wanted to say, congratulations and good job, and keep it up.
Why don't we clear that by taking a motion to approve in a second?
I will make a motion to approve E.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So E is passed, four oh. The other two, I pulled C and D. C, I think is, I'm not sure what's going on there, but in the minutes, Susan, we show Linda is absent. But in a number of the places where votes were taken, we show five oh. So...
It should be four oh.
One of the, one of the others, true.
My mistake is Veronica was absent.
Right.
So...
I will make that change.
Okay.
To the minutes.
Great.
But they can be approved with that change.
With that amendment, okay. So we're looking for a motion on C to approve as amended.
Move approval as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Linda and Alvin?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then on D, I pulled that for discussion, and it was just a question of confusion on my part. I thought we closed this out with a letter of June 18th, and it looked to me like maybe it wasn't closed now.
We have to formally close out the complaint.
Okay.
By rejecting it.
Okay. So it's a formality issue?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So with the rejection of the claim, the claimant will have a period of, I believe, it's six months to file a lawsuit if she feels so compelled to do so. And we felt that the letter was sufficient, but our insurance company says you have to close it.
This formal rejection, okay. Good. So I'll entertain a motion to pass E, uh, D.
I'll make that motion to pass D.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. D passes, four oh. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A, contract award. Melissa, you were going to speak to us on that?
Sure. So staff recommends a contract award with Adams Ashby for our CDVG grant writing. And as you know, Terri Cox has been our CDVG grant writing and administrator for some time. She's recently retired. We issued an RFP, in fact, we issued two RFPs to make sure that we had a competitive procurement. And we brought Terri back, and she assisted Amy Augustine, our planning director, in the review of the two proposals we received, and unanimously, the recommendation was for Adams Ashby. All of the expenses for the contract are expected to be covered under the grant administration and under grant funds, with the exception of the initial grant writing, which could range anywhere from $3,000 to $8,500 per application. We are currently going to be meeting with city staff to discuss priorities for that application. As you are very familiar, discussions so far have been whether or not we explore CDVG for the Val, not Vallecito, is it, the Vallecito Road sewer line project, or do we explore CDVG for a public safety campus and start moving towards a consolidation effort of city services. And also, just to let you know, we anticipate, we have some discretionary CDVG funds, about $27,000, that we are looking into utilizing for grant application purposes. So for, with that in mind, I recommend approval of this item.
Council comments? Public comments on item A? Okay. Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four oh. Good. Item B. Emily?
Here we go.
You're on the hook.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Emily.
I'm here with our third quarter financial report, as well as the enterprise funds' proposed reserve policies. So I'm going to start with an overview of the city's finances. So looking at the city's major revenue sources, I'm projecting through the end of the year about 2.3 million. If you want to reference my staff report, I do mention a few things that have changed significantly since my last report. The main things for the general fund have been updated revenue projections, sales tax projection was increased by 15,000. And we are expected to meet our franchise fees budget, which we were unsure of at mid-year, but that looks pretty good at this point. These are the same tables that we talked about at budget, and so if you have any questions on those, let me know. Looks like our property tax estimated at 852, and sales tax is at 877. My TOT estimate is at, right at about $1 million for the year. And gas tax projections have only changed slightly. Again, if you want me to slow down, or if you have any questions, let me know.
Sure.
I'm just going a little fast. We just went over this in budget, and nothing's really changed. This is the same numbers that I did then a couple of weeks ago. Our general fund expenses were projected to close at approximately 200,000 positive, and that is primarily thanks to our understaffing in the police department. So they've worked really hard with their understaffing, but the city gets to close positive.
So that, that was net of what we had to pay the sheriff during that time, too?
Yes.
Okay.
So here's our general fund cash projection. Looks like we're going to close at about 1.8. Or, that's after budget, I'm sorry. So we're at, my lines are a little off there. We're at about 1.4 at the end of this year. All right. So, for sewer. So there were a couple change, or big items that occurred since the mid-year report, and those have all been, been before you as items. We had three major repairs to this, to a sewer system. There was a pump, let me, sorry. There was a lift station pump at Greenhorn Creek, a sewer transfer pump at Holman Reservoir, and then the Greenhorn Creek transmission line. So all three of those did change my projection significantly. So, in operations, we're expected to close at 30,000. And looking at our debt and capital, we're looking at about 94,000. So looking at our sewer funds' cash. So this is kind of where I want to speed up, too, because this is what I'm going to talk more in depth about, is our cash for, in the water and sewer funds. And so I kind of broke it out tentatively with, you see the different colors in my cash. That is my, those are my proposed reserves within the sewer funds' cash. And so, within that, we have an operations and maintenance reserve, the connection fee balance, debt service reserve, our OPEB reserve, and then our unrestricted balance. And so, and that was going up, starting from the bottom going up. Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit about the water fund, and then we'll come right back to that, if that's all right? All right. So operations. So there haven't been any significant changes since the mid-year report. The one thing that I would like to mention is in the capital funds, we do see the Dollar General Waterline improvement that has been recorded that happened since mid-year. All right. And then, for our water funds' cash, again, with the different colors, this has my proposed reserves in there, with operations and maintenance, then connection fees, debt service, OPEB, and then unrestricted. So now, let's talk more in-depth about those. Does any, before I move on, I know I kind of breezed through that, but if anyone has any questions, or if needs to go back, let me know.
You're going to get in-depth about moving money around?
Yes.
To cover this stuff, you said?
The stuff that, that we need.
Cover the 30, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. So these are my reserves policies, and then I have a recommended transfer of funds. And you'll see why we have this recommended transfer. So, so first, right now, as you know, we're doing a lot of water and sewer capital projects. And so, it's really important that we identify, how much do we need to keep in the bank, and how much can we spend without getting ourselves in trouble with maintaining a good financial position in our enterprise funds? And so, this is what I am presenting as our reserve policy. This is already in practice, and it's, it's a convention to have 30% of operations and maintenance in your operation funds. And so, you want to provide consistent unrestricted services, and then you can meet all your short-term obligations with that. And so, for this, sewer operations is approximately 1.8 million, and water operations is approximately 1.5 million. And so that would mean keeping about 555,000 in the sewer operations fund, and 450 in the water operations fund. So the next one is for debt service. We keep our debt service in separate funds, so that we make payments and meet the obligations of our lenders. And so I'm recommending to have two years' worth of debt payments on hand in each of those funds, to ensure timely payments, and in, in case of any budget constraints, it would prevent large fluctuations out of the operations budget, too. And so, what that means in dollars would be for our debt payments, for sewer, is about 830,000, and for water, about 150,000, for those two funds. And then our connection fee funds. And so, this, there's an annual report that's released in about December, and you'll, you'll, the council will see it in January for acceptance, and that will identify the specific value of those, the connection fees that the city keeps on hand. And so, this would just make sure that our fund, you know, that, those are the current balances, and they should match what's in the fund. So the issue with that was the city has been, I mean, has been transferring in funds to the connection fee fund to meet percentage requirements. And so what I'm proposing, and this is how I presented it in the budget, was to, when we use the connection fee funds, we transfer them out into a project fund. And so we maintain the, the true connection fee balance in those funds. Any questions so far? And then the next, the last one is the capital reserve fund, or this would also be an accumulation of our funds that are, is available for, for capital projects or needed maintenance expenditures. And so, the idea with this fund, and I think it's best if we look at this, this was a table presented in the, in Melissa's staff report concerning the rate study, and it shows a good flow of how that these funds, we'll see them working. As we, as we go, we're going to save up money, and then we're going to spend it down as we deliver projects, and then we'll have a period of saving up money, and then again, spend it down. And so that's kind of how we want to see these capital reserves work, and so, as we spend the funds down, we're going to then afterwards, save money, then following year, to replenish the funds, and then before we spend again. Does that make sense? So with, with the capital reserve fund, any expenditures will also need a replenishment plan. So it's just identifying in the next year's budget, we're going to bring the fund back up to this amount if we're spending it down. So, this is my calculations, so that we meet those reserve requirements. We have enough in the, in each fund to cover all of these reserves, and then the balance, I think, actually, I want to go back two slides. So then, the amount above the other reserves are listed here for water and sewer, and these numbers are as of our last audit. And so I am proposing that our funds transfer be done on July 1st of 2018, so that would be the first day of the fiscal year, and the day after essentially these numbers were audited, to have a fresh start for the year, and then next year, too. Okay. So for calculating these amounts, for the sewer O and M, there's 30% of our operations. As you can see, the needed transfer is actually stems right here. The current balance in this fund is a negative 1.9 million, so I'd like to restore a positive fund balance there. And then for the mitigation fees, you can see our, we have 193 connection fees on hand. However, in the current balance, we have 1.4 million. So I'd like to make sure that that is shown as the true amount of connection fees that we have on hand. Just to skip over the capital replacement for now, but the debt service, we, we have approximately that amount, but as we're trying to see exactly how much is available to spend on our projects, we don't need some of that excess. And then, the balance is the amount that we'll want in the capital replacement fund. And the OPEB is remaining unchanged. I believe that was an amount set aside by council several years ago, and at this time, I'm not proposing any changes to that. Any questions about the sewer fund calculation?
What's your take on, on how the operations and maintenance balance got negative in the first place?
I believe that it was because they allocate, the way the utility revenue is allocated between the operations funds and the capital funds, it's just allocating the revenue, and I think it was based off of how many, the amount of the projects in the project fund. And so say, you have $200,000 in projects budgeted in your capital fund, and so you're essentially transferring out $200,000, but maybe that doesn't meet the operations budget, and creates a deficit in the fund, essentially. And so I, I believe that's how it is, and so, moving forward, the budget practices that we have passed ensures that a, we must always have a balanced operations budget, and so that balance will never go below zero. Or below that reserve amount, because we'll always have to ensure that.
Are we all, you, are we all comfortable that these will pass auditing tests, these movements of money?
So the, the thing with that is that in our audit, all of these funds are added together. So you won't even see it in the audit, but...
But it's, it's appropriate to accounting standards and everything.
Yeah, essentially, it's just, yeah, yes.
So, and Emily, what you're doing actually, because the concern is the mitigation fee revenue, and we're actually cleaning up and being more accountable for the mitigation fee revenue?
Yes, yes. It is actually, exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I think that that's the big concern, is not wanting mitigation fee revenue to go towards an operations budget.
Exactly.
With a transfer, but making sure that we're accountable.
Yes.
For that.
Yes.
And so basically, what you're saying is that transfers were happening from a budgetary perspective for projects without project delivery, and then not...
Or if they were, it was just creating a deficit in the operations fund.
Okay.
Because you're transferring the revenue out of the operations fund, therefore leaving a deficit in the operations, where maybe the capital fund, and, and so that could be how the capital fund got, had so much cash accumulated there, because maybe projects weren't delivered as, as intended, but the budget transfers were still happening.
And so, we're confident, though, in our accounting of the mitigation fee revenue?
Yes. That was reported to you in January.
Okay.
And so this is the same, the same process for the water funds. We don't see that huge negative here in the water funds as we did in sewer, but also to clean up this mitigation fee balance is, is critical, and then also identifying how much of the amount we have to spend on our capital projects, that we are planning on delivering. Any questions there?
Nope.
Okay.
Any in council?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Looks like you're on the right track.
Any public comment on this particular issue? Okay. Seeing none, on that, we will be looking for, you need a motion and a vote to accept the financial report?
And approval of the reserve policies. And approval of the, I would, if, it would be nice if you had it all specifically said, the approval of... the approval of the, because I would also like to put this in our budget for last fiscal year, and then also approval of the transfer.
Can you do that all in one, or do you need it done twice?
We can do it all in one if we include all the aspects of this item. So it would be a motion to accept the third quarter financial report, approve the enterprise reserve policies, and approval of funds transfer, and budget adjustments to reflect enterprise fund reserve policies as of July 1st, 2018.
2018, right.
I'll make that motion. As stated by Susan.
Yeah. I'll second it. Okay, you all in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Thank you, Emily.
Well, thank you very much, that was a big check mark on my to-do list.
Very good.
Oh, good, it's big enough.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, good stuff.
All right, that brings us to regular agenda item C.
The resolution number on this item is Resolution 1923.
Uh, is that on B or C?
C.
C, 19-23. Okay.
So staff request the authorization for the city administrator, if possible, we amended to include by name, Melissa Eads, to sign the related closing documents and real estate documents for the acquisition of real property located on Finnegan Lane, and authorization to make payments for said property. Happy to answer any questions. This became a requirement of the title company that needed a governing board resolution that I have signing authority to execute agreements on behalf of the city.
Okay. Council comments?
None.
Go ahead.
Public comment, this item, C? Okay.
So I might give a follow-up item as it pertains to the property, oh, sorry, go ahead, I didn't see, sorry.
I am so happy to see this on the agenda, and I hope it passes. I've been a support, strong supporter of the Angels Creek Trail for a long time, and there has been a blank spot in what, where the trail could go, because the city didn't have the property, and this opens a big piece of that up. There's one piece left, but this is a huge step forward to making that an absolutely beautiful project. And if none of you have walked along the creek in that area, I encourage you to do so, it's absolutely beautiful. Thank you.
John, you want to state your name for the record?
Oh. I got it.
I'm John. John Broder, 1860 Finnegan Lane.
Thank you.
So just one more update as it pertains to this piece of property and to the overall trail. Drake Haglen and Associates has put together a preliminary application for Prop 68 funding for environmental and right-of-way acquisitions. So we will continue to keep you posted. There's no need to bring that item forward until they consider our application more seriously, at which point then we will need a governing board resolution, but right now, it's my understanding it's going through the initial screening process. So stay tuned.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
I have a motion to pass resolution.
Is it 1923?
19-23.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Yes. Much out for the poison ivy, though.
It's true.
I know, I didn't get it, I was so surprised.
I was, too.
I washed, I washed with that stuff, you told me to get, it's like, oh.
Technic.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Yeah, whatever it is, yeah, I still got some.
Okay. All right. Item D, update on public safety, power shut-off readiness. Alyssa?
So we just wanted to give the council an update, make sure that everybody is communicating with their neighbors and keeping an eye on the information that PG&E is putting forth, because it is good information on how to prepare for the potential for a power shut-off. Also, city, we've been working with our PIO, our Public Information Officer, who is Teresa with the police department, and she's prepared a series of press releases, so we are getting that information out there as well. Staff is meeting regularly, and we have purchased with current year, not current year budget, but prior year budget, because today is officially the 2nd, but we have purchased two generators for the fire department here and City Hall, so we are working on trying to determine how best to fund the switch, so that we can install those generators. And then we are exploring partnerships with the county for the acquisition of a generator for the police department. We're also working with the county on the identification of resiliency centers, so hopefully they will be taking the lead on that as well, we'll be able to make that information public. And then we are trying to identify contractual relationships for fuel source and fuel supply. So we'll continue to keep you posted, but talk with your neighbors, tell them to have food, and water, and fuel, and cash, and all the things that PG&E tries to have on hand. And then we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Did, have they happened to, have they had a shutdown anywhere in the state since this all came to light?
So I heard today at an act the meeting that they had one in Southern California, and it was for a period of 24 hours. We know that they had one last year in Calaveras County, it was isolated to, I think the McCallum Hill area. I don't remember the time, but we did hear about recently, they did have one Southern California area for 24 hours.
I believe they also had one in the Napa-Yolo area, and it ended up being about 24 hours.
Okay. All right, public comment on that? Item D, public safety, PG&E. Hopefully, everybody here is seeing those things, I'm getting the Angels PD, I guess I didn't know Teresa was writing those, but I did, I have seen those. Good job, yeah.
Good. And then Nathan might kill me, but we are working on an update to the emergency operations plan. So I won't give a date on when we're gonna have it done, but I think we're thinking end of summer, possibly. So I think all of this is just creating a really good opportunity for staff to come together and talk about emergency preparedness, and kind of a good training opportunity for us, and we'll just keep our fingers crossed that it doesn't affect our community this summer.
Okay. So that's just informational, anything else?
That's it, that's all I've got.
All right, so now we're moving on to item E, which we adjusted the agenda to include.
The adoption of Resolution 1924 to supersede 19, Resolution 1912, putting an item on the ballot to increase the transient occupancy tax from 10% to 12%.
Okay, any discussion on the council for that?
Yes.
Public comment on that issue? Okay, I don't see any, so I'll entertain a motion on...
I make a motion for 1924 to supersede 1912.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
And item F is the adoption of Resolution 1926 to supersede Resolution 1914, putting a question on the ballot to make the offices of city clerk and city treasurer appointed rather than elected.
Okay, council comment? Public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that Resolution 1926 be superseded by Resolu, right, no, supersede. I got a D on the end. Supersedes 1914, Resolution 1914, is that correct? We make it?
You need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Thank you.
Okay. Council reports, start with Veronica.
Nothing major to report, just, again, Farmer's Market is wonderful. It's so nice and enjoyable, and definitely a lot of people attending also went to the Music in the Park, which was also at Utica Park the Wednesday prior, and that was really nice also. So always encouraging people to be downtown, shopping, and supporting local business.
Let's see, I guess mainly is just the downtown, just to update, the August 17th Angels Night Out, this has one, two, three, four bands, no, one DJ, and then three bands, or music going in three different places, nibbles and snacks, and wine at various places, and beer downtown for Angels Night Out, August 17th. It's gonna be, just like, bringing everybody down, and all of the shops, or most of the shops will stay open. Okay, so it's gonna be a great party.
August 17th.
August 17th, that's the third Saturday, it's the beginning of the first, the third Saturdays, that'll go year-round, hopefully, that's the goal, anyway.
What are the hours for that?
It'll be starting at 5:00, and 8:00, 9:00, you know, however long it lasts. We're taking, you know, after Sonora's second Saturday, they've been very successful. But ours is not gonna be quite as much emphasis on art, there's going to be, we're hoping to do Bingo at some point, and whatever, Square Dance, who knows, we'll see.
Angels Night Out?
Angels Night Out.
Thank you.
Yep, third Saturday.
Okay, Alvin?
I attended the UWPA meeting, my first one of those, and pretty enlightening, there's a lot that goes on there with power and water transmission, and they're trying to figure out how to generate money and keep power on, and all sorts of stuff. And they're dealing with PG&E blackouts, too, because they'll have to shut their systems Yeah, it was an interesting meeting. Eye-opening, so that's about all I got at the moment, and I run late. You know, like at 9:30 or 10:00, it was a late meeting, so.
All right.
Yeah.
The only thing I would add to that is that I can tell you that we have a firm agreement with a new general manager, on a start date of July 16th for UWPA, and we're hoping to meet with him, I'm hoping to meet with him on Monday, the 8th. Karen's in the audience, she'll, she's been instrumental in getting him to sign the contract, and we're happy about that, and looking forward to it. And that's it, so if there's anything else, we're gonna do calendar.
Okay. I was corrected on my calendar and have removed the COG meeting.
I'm not sure, but I'll check. It's me and Amanda.
I think that you're correct.
I think so, too, but I'm not 100%.
I copied this over. Friday, the 5th, is Farmer's Market. Then on July 10th, at 4:00 PM here, they're having an open house to look and, look at and talk about the curb, gutter, and sidewalk projects going on in the city. On the 11th, at 4 o'clock here, they'll be having an open house about the Angels Camp Trail. And at 6:00 PM, Planning Commission meets here. And on the 12th, Farmer's Market again. The 15th, at 6:00 PM, is LAPCO. And then we meet back here for council at 6 o'clock on the 16th.
Okay. Good to go? Looks like we're adjourned in record time.
Shabam.
First time in a while, huh?
Yeah.
It's first time in a long time. It's Friday.
Johnny's running meetings more often.
Alvin, I don't think you've been here more, you've had a meeting like one thing, you come in, one thing, boom, we're gone.
Really? I had one of those.
That was a good old day. Before Melissa came.
A good old day.
Yeah, she's caused all this trouble.
They hired the, they hired the gentleman.